I call this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board to order. That is March fourth, two thousand twenty-five. It is seven P M. And we are in the municipal meeting room. On the agenda, we have approval of the agenda, approval of the minutes for February fifteenth and February eighteenth. We have space for a public comment, and then we have new business. And that that piece of business being Skilling, Skilling Woods subdivision.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Susan Roth, to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. And for public comments, since there's nobody from the public here. Uh, we will not be hearing anything. Meanwhile.
Wasn't advertised publicly.
Yep, yeah, now we're gonna, I just thought I'd get that out of the way. Approval of the minutes for February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Yes.
I work.
I move to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Tom McGinn. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous.
One, one abstention.
One abstention, I'm sorry. And then the second one is the sidewalk minutes. Oh, no, that's.
We just did the sidewalk.
We just did the sidewalk. Okay.
Yeah.
The next one is the the minutes of February eighteenth. I would point out to our secretary that he needs to go to school and learn how to spell my last name. It's G A G O N G. No, that middle G should be an N. That's quite okay.
Other than that, I move to approve.
Okay, motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Paul Green, to approve as corrected. Any discussion? Hearing none. All others in favor?
Aye.
One abstention.
It is unanimous with one abstention.
That yours or mine?
Actually, two abstentions.
Yeah, mine too.
Yeah.
I was at the meeting, yeah.
Yeah, you were at the meeting. Okay.
Wait, but he's not on the attendees.
Oh, I'm not. Oh, so. What date was it? Sorry. I was not at the meeting for the.
Last week, last meeting?
No, I was out of town.
Okay.
So you have two abstentions.
So we have two abstentions. Five in favor, two abstentions.
Not a big deal.
The next item on the agenda is Skilling Woods subdivision, a subdivision amendment. Proposal to amend Skilling Woods subdivision to construct a six hundred and twenty-four foot private way and create two new lots located on map ten, lot ten on Laura Lane. Rennie Turgeon is the owner applicant. Paul Gadboy P E is the project engineer.
The chair? Yes. Uh, just to make it known, I have known Mr. Turgeon for, uh, I don't know, forty-five years. And, uh, I am in a butter. I think I can weigh in according with the ordinances objectively. If you don't have any objections, and the board doesn't.
Anybody on the board object? Hearing none? Join right in.
Mr. Chair? Yeah, I also am in a butter. I don't know the applicant in any way other than he lives at the end of the street that I live off of, but.
Okay.
I don't have any. There's no one else on the board. Not, not in the correct. Yeah, I'm down, I'm down in the new neighborhood.
Before we get started. Hang on, before we get started, who else is in bar? Big piece of property. Yeah, it is.
I walk through the.
Okay, now that we have that out of the way. Oh. You have the application in front of you.
Yeah, yeah.
An amendment for the approved subdivision.
Okay, because that's.
Have you all had a chance to look through it?
Yes.
Yes, there are, there are no waivers being asked.
Nope.
I do have a question. For Paul. Evidently, evidently, you can't find a copy of the original. You can't find something that's, that's forty years old?
Oh, I guess I'm not sure you're talking, you're talking about.
It's a copy of the Arundel Planning Board's original findings of fact and approval.
Oh, yeah.
The original subdivision. Oh, you have it?
But it doesn't say. Well, I, I didn't get it from Ann, um.
Oh, because the box itself.
I mean, basically, it just said that they approved final approval on project. And no, nothing, didn't say anything whatsoever about the project. I'm more than welcome to look at it if you want to.
No, no, that's okay. It's just the box was not checked, and I'm thinking to myself.
Okay, so I called Ann, she sent me this, but wasn't really any help. That was done back in eighty-eight. Anybody on the board back then? I was here, but up this project.
No.
So, yeah, I did get it. You're welcome to look at it.
No, that's okay.
So Paul, take it away.
Yeah.
Show us what you're promising.
They have bought a simple private way staffed with you playing. But they, you can't see that, man, that helped us make it a little bit more difficult, which is okay. So we thought about a simple private way. It is just a driveway right now to a house lot that Rainey gave to his daughter. And we're going to create a private way so that we can add the seven existing houses, remaining building house only is remaining fifty-eight acres. But the man, Sam, and where I can fix some of the calls, Sam, um, this was part of a subdivision. And so I kind of disagree, but I'm not, she's probably right and I'm probably wrong, so we're going to read what meant the plan. And the original subdivision, it was lot one, two, three, and four was created out of the seventy or eighty composite by Brown. The rest of the property was labeled not lot five. It was labeled remaining land. Since then, um, this lot that conveyed our attorneys didn't have an issue. Lot was conveyed. Another lot got conveyed. Then titles, the lawyers and titles didn't seem to catch any subdivision type amendment thing. And I'm not saying Sam's not right, she probably is right, but because it was part of a subdivision, it showed as remaining land. She feels that we are, are to come in and do amended subdivision plan. So obviously, it makes it's not a huge process to do that. Hopefully. Um, and it certainly would make life uh, better for future any legal actions for attorneys or, so that's what we're doing. Instead of calling him lot five and lot six, that this should have probably been lot five, lot six. I'm calling it lot A, lot B, lot C is remaining land. So we're going to go, go through and get subdivision amendment to that previous plan, which I had, I think I submitted it in previous documents. Um, but it showed, it showed basically four lots in the plan. Um, and so Sam brought up some points that I still need probably to address. Uh, there was kind of my, and I'm acting to do it. Um, because it's going private way, staff review. I was proposing overhead, like overhead utilities for the existing power pole to Rainey's house lot. Because it's subdivision triggers underground utilities. We don't have a problem going from existing power pole, underground, and servicing and lot.
Okay.
Um, the other, so, and the other thing is because it's subdivision uh, by chief super payment, maybe even not, maybe it's not part of the subdivision, maybe it doesn't really matter. So we have to sprinkle his residents. So I need to just add a note to the plan. I already, I've got my plan, just gonna say lot C is showing part of a fire suppression system in accordance with NFPA standards, thirteen feet. Um, so those are, I was in, Sam brought up a drainage management, whether it should have a drainage management. Um, that was a very good question. I don't believe we do this call for it. Actually, which judges are pretty large wetland. It's over remaining land of Mr. Turgeon's. That would be certainly different. I have a lot A, a lot B, and I want to preserve drainage easements, but the wetlands in itself is going to really act as a buffer and a drainage. If I had to put a drainage, I would have to go all the way to the turnpike. I mean, surely this makes sense. Over his land, a huge wetland is protected anyway, you know, really going to be filling it. And if you dig in the filter, then you'd be putting a cove in to maintain drainage. So I don't believe we need a drainage management for this particular call for it. Um, and then uh, public works, Terry, uh, just popped in a quick email. He wanted to know whether this road was, so I didn't really understand the question, whether it actually is relevant or is it just a private provide, or am I saying, I do show a proposed driveway coming out the end of the proposed private way. Obviously, can't come off the terminal, that's not allowed. So my private way is long enough so I can come in on the side. And from there, it's just a private driveway. Anyway, that Rainey wants to go to get to his house, house. So I believe that will, that will answer Terry's question, hopefully. Um, the D V stormwater perimeter was submitted on two twenty-five, so they have fourteen days, so seven days from today will be pretty much the due date saying there's an issue with P P S stormwater. And I guess I don't really have a whole lot of house to add, because I know we've probably took up nearly five minutes.
Is, is this going to be a private way? Or is it?
Private way.
Okay. And, and what's, what are the standards it's being built to?
It's built to the, well, to, uh, right here. Where's it? Two to ten lots, two day lots, with the private waste standards. I have some of this. It's built to the private waste standards. I know I printed them out somewhere as far as to look at. Alright, so the private waste is the two ten lots, right? So you have to pick for right away. You have to have sixteen feet of travel way. Uh, it's not on this one, but you look at the detail on my detail sheet. Uh, my cross section shows sixteen foot travel way. On the detail sheet. As you need one foot shoulders, so the detailed sheet shows the one foot shoulders required by private waste standards. It shows the depth of gravel required, which is the fifteen inches of type P and a three inch crush in the crown specified in the private waste standards. Uh, together with the grades. If you can't, uh, the road grades. It, it means all the requirements for the private road, road grades. Find it again. So if you look at the grade, you've got to have no more than ten percent. But my deepest grade is nine point nine five. Can't have more than, um, five percent within fifty feet of intersection. I have two point one nine percent coming in from the end of Laura Lane. And then, uh, minimum sun line radius is a oh, minimum sun line radius is seventy-five feet. I have one point four, uh, I have one hundred. So it needs all the appointments for designing the private waste standards. That was one of Sam's questions also.
Through the chair?
Yep.
Can I ask you a follow up question?
Absolutely.
Um, did you, so, lot A, existing prior conveyance to
His daughter.
Turgeon Dennis.
Yep.
What, so it looks like you, there's a little bit of a gap between the existing property.
Pretty good catch, right?
Yeah.
And, and the, and the road?
Yeah.
Um, so that's, that private way has a fifty foot access easement. Because it was built by a backlot requirement, so it has that. Probably doesn't really show up. This is her access in, looking at, back to the pizza's leg line.
Yeah.
That's her access given for the backlot requirement. So it kind of overlaps when the new roads go in.
Okay, so she doesn't, that lot doesn't need.
Do you want to do it technical?
Yeah.
Or fix that?
I, I mean, I would make it clean to have, yeah, instead of that little strip of.
That one. But that one does have an existing fifty foot wide access. But that's our requirement.
So it, it, it doesn't need that frontage. My question is if it needed the frontage for conformity.
Has it, it still has its fifty foot wide access requirement, right, based on how we created it. I think the cleavage, I was going to talk to Ray about that. The probably shouldn't convey this little strip right into her anyway, so it would be
Or just expand, just expand the private way.
We were expanding the property to the edge of.
Or whatever, yeah, whichever, yeah.
So good catch. But yeah, so that's something that we probably should do. Just to store her lot now, increase to the existing right away.
If, can I?
When I create that law, I want to be very conservative, because I was really close on trying to create this fifty foot right away, meaning setbacks exist.
Right, okay.
So I wanted to be a, or a little bit of the cautious side, so I made that line not exactly where it's landing right now, but I wanted to make sure I had enough room to make this private way work in the future. So I didn't want to get it so perfect, I missed it by three inches, right?
I have a follow up question on that, if you don't mind. Um, you have the the driveway going in that where it starts bending. Further down, um, where it's the existing paved driveway, is that, uh, does that, does that have an easement or a right of way conveyed to it? But, yeah, because right now it would be, it would be crossing lot C. And you'd have
C.
Yeah, the, the the
The remaining land.
The remaining land, yeah. I thought you were calling it C. Yeah. So that driveway is crossing.
That driveway comes into something, like.
Would, it seemed to me like would make more sense just to have that, um, instead of having, you would correct a little bit of that gap, but why not bring it past the driveway? So that you can just keep it simple. Have the driveway on that property.
Right. So make the correction from that, I mean, maybe that corner point. Yeah. Right.
Made that all.
Yeah, okay, so, so.
It's going to encompass.
That would encompass the drive.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not going to, I could save your lovely little.
Yeah. Somebody. Easements and everything else.
Yeah, well, when somebody, if she were to go to sell.
Yeah.
That correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, definitely make her lot one go somehow from that angle point to the right way on that side of the driveway.
Good, so show them the driveway.
Yep.
Have another question on the, um, the, the hammerhead. Is that is that laid out like that just to have a, a turning radius for a fire truck, so it's, okay, to, um, it's not to have another driveway right there.
Not for any other reason, but to be able to have a fire truck. I would thirty foot radius or something.
Yeah.
Kind of required by ordinance of thirty foot radius. With fire truck.
Okay.
And it's kind of funky, you know, I had to minimize what they felt. We probably want to fill it. And then I'm in court wanting to fill this, but they say I wasn't going to fill it because my driver is coming here.
Yeah.
We may never, ever go any further than this. But they kind of, well, you might not just go a little bit of that, just so that if you do.
Oh, they made you permit that?
Yeah.
And pay part of the compensation fee?
Luckily, it was four hundred square feet, but that's what.
Yeah.
It's five hundred bucks a square.
Right.
I know, whatever it is.
Nine hundred bucks.
Yeah.
Or whatever.
Yeah. So I said, alright, I just didn't make the other one go in that direction. I already have that. She's actually feel, but I didn't propose it originally. Um, I said Rainey's paying, so I Yeah, I think it's part of my, it's paying twenty-five thousand dollars, roughly, feet. The D V.
Yeah. I saw that and I looked at it, ouch.
Yo. And I, well, you know, actually, they, they gave, actually, I missed the house lot, I thought, I think I did that, they didn't include it. I didn't talk to them about that in my permit application. They didn't add that two thousand square feet to the compensation fee.
Oh, prior permitted?
Yep.
Yep.
So if you're noting a small vernal pool, I don't know what C O R P.
You saw that in the wetland report.
On, on this story.
Yeah, there was like two egg masses. So it wasn't a significant vernal pool. But any egg mass is a vernal pool, of course, I'm a core of engineers. So we had to define as a core, a core pool. And the core basically says, just don't fill it.
Right.
Basically.
Okay.
You don't have, you don't have to meet a setback, but don't fill it.
The, the core doesn't have the same vernal pool standard that the state does, or differentiating between a, a non-significant vernal pool and a significant vernal pool. So pretty much you've got to, got to identify all of them for the core's standpoint. Like Paul said, they make you stay out of them, they regulate it, but it's, they regulate it differently than the D P.
Right, thanks. I didn't know what the four.
Yeah. And so, and that was almost like manmade and skitter rut.
They don't care.
They don't care. Right, it was there and we had to say it was there and I just had to avoid it, which I would have probably liked to avoid it anyway, just by, that's where I want to go my road anyway, but so, yes, that, that was core vernal pool and the application that, uh, Chris Copy, I think, sent that information to I F N W. They determined that there would never be a significant vernal pool. They followed up with paperwork, but yes, that was a good question.
Paul, I want to make sure I heard you correctly from earlier. The chief told you to sprinkle houses?
Well, of course, by, because we're in a subdivision.
Yeah.
I don't know if we were in subdivision, our houses in Arundel need to be sprinkled or, or less.
Subdivision, for us subdivisions.
Just that, yes, subdivision.
Because we, we can't tell you on a private.
I didn't know that. I think sometimes, every house now subdivision or not needs to be sprinkled.
Yeah, we chose not to. We simply said it, if it's in the subdivision, yes, it's sprinkled.
So I informed Rainey that, that this, this house lot would be sprinkled. And in the future obviously, though, there won't be any future lots to come back on the board. Then we have to amend the subdivision plan again, but yeah, that, his house will be sprinkled.
Is there an alternative to doing that?
Yes.
To be sprinkled?
I believe, I believe we said it has to be sprinkled.
I think it's, I've heard that you can put a fire tank in, which is more money, try to dig a pond, which is really freezing itself and
So it's easier.
Best situation is really to sprinkle.
Just curious.
I mean, if you have like five houses, it might be cheaper to put a tank in. If you have five houses. But one house doesn't make any sense.
I'm, I'm, I'll be honest, I'm a big fan of sprinkling, because I want you to get out of the house.
Yeah, that's what I said. I, I, my house is sprinkled, and I told the fire chief, I said, look, if it just, if it just saves my animals, because I'm not home, I would be happy. Now, so, yeah.
Okay, and you
Local contractors, you're going to use for the road?
I think he's going to use Laby.
Huh?
Laby?
Yeah, you, use your shot, that's all my stuff.
That's all I would just.
You guys keeping the same driveway for the kids, not ready? In one place?
Yeah.
You're not moving it off on this one?
No, no, my driveway's staying.
Yeah, I stayed more than long.
Paul, you said you, you're building a road to the minor subdivision standards.
It's not a minor, it's just the private way, which is about two to ten lots, I already forgot. It's a private way to the ten lot standard.
Yeah. Well, I guess that's what, what, I think I just want to give a word of caution, if, if, if this is an amendment to an existing subdivision. And how many more lots can you get out? If you're planning on doing anything down.
That's a good question. But if, if this ever were to proceed as a, another, so, he would only be able to do that he'd have two lots, eight more lots. But, but of course, extend the private way. Have to continue the private way.
Right. If, if.
Go through subdivision, see that private way, that little area that we already had permitted. And hopefully find enough area.
Would that include the, the first four that are there? Or first? If, because I'm not sure.
Yeah, no, no, I would put anybody that uses the, uses the right of way. That, that went down, use the right of way, right way.
Okay.
So, but we'll say B, and Rainey's lot is two, so he could have eight more theoretically, ten, because the private waste standard is two to ten. Can't go to ten.
Not today's. You know, that's based on today.
Correct.
You know, fifteen years down the line, that could be changed, you never know.
You never know. That's correct.
And the, the only, the only thing you need to be aware of is that if it does change, you may end up with the same problem that Mr. Woods had, because he had, he was either going to build the road to town standards, or he wasn't going to get his other six houses.
Right.
And he chose not to get the six houses.
Well, that, that's the drawback, right? If you don't go through subdivision now and grab four or five more lots. If the standard's changed, it may have to come back and upgrade the entire private road to meet new standards.
Yep, which is like building a new road.
Yeah, it can be.
Yeah.
Right?
Uh huh.
Any other questions, gentlemen? Well, we need to do a sidewalk. Because this, this is.
You know, so, and, and not that it's pertinent to the subdivision, but the, the home for the, where you're looking to build on lot C, I guess, or remaining land. That is going to be on this side of that big wetland complex, right?
I think it's shown on the sheet. If you look at sheet three or five, I didn't play three or five. It shows where the house is. So the third sheet I showed it.
Oh, right there, the, the setback line splits it.
Yeah, I always, I didn't even say propose house. I guess I'll fix that. Uh.
Well, it's totally in one of them. And I'm looking at the box.
So, yeah, you're on this block right here.
Yeah.
So, um, this is a shoreline zone wetland. So I'm showing the red is a hundred foot setback from the shoreline overweight zone, it's based on the wetlands and adjacent to that property. We are, I'm also showing the fifty foot property, because we're allowed to go within fifty feet of the shoreline zone. We can go down to twenty-five feet if you guys would let us do that. But I don't think we need to ask you, so. And I know it's a special exemption type thing, if you had to run twenty-five feet, we could, but, but we're going to maintain, we can put that back as required by zoning. The house is going to be situated almost a hundred feet from that zone line. So Rainey's just going to kind of construct a driveway coming, starting at the end of existing private way, and then just heading up to wherever, we have a test bit shown. That's definitely support septic for that house location. So that's where he's proposing to I'm assuming build his house and or see before his kids or whatever, I'm just not even sure yet, right?
Hmm.
Still about ten minute walk, we're going to come over.
Because he's got a big house, I know, he's got his house, his house is huge. That's too big. So I don't know what's going to happen, maybe get rid of that downsized. We're not sure, but definitely want to have the opportunity to sell this house, I assume, in the near future. And have a place to build.
Mm-hmm. I'm, I'm assuming this is the final plan application?
I'm assuming we want to go as fast as we possibly can, yes.
Okay.
I mean, I don't think there's anything else with Sam. I, I pretty much addressed her comments, I believe. We'll get a cost estimate, she asked for, we should have that.
Yeah.
And a financial capacity. Do that for next round.
Question for the town planner. Is the application complete? Okay.
Yeah, she said it was completed in her memo.
It, it looked like it, but I wanted to make sure nothing was missing.
Yeah, yeah.
We can, we, we can do, we can do the sidewalk first, or we can do the sidewalk after, but.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna throw it out right now, that we uh grant this, uh, can deem this as complete.
Okay, I agree, I'll second that.
Motion by Tom again, seconded by Susan Roth to deem the application complete, any discussions? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous, the next step is a sidewalk. We have within, we have thirty days in which to hold a sidewalk. And we have to give a butters notice.
For how long?
Uh, hang on, I'm not, I don't know if she has to post in the, in the paper or not, oh yeah, it does. Uh, no, that's, that would be the public hearing, the sidewalk, she can, can just be posted on the bulletin board. And on the town website.
I'll make a motion, we do the sidewalk at uh, six o'clock on March eighteenth.
Motion by, who, who seconded that?
Maybe Jamie.
Okay.
That's what I was hoping for.
March eighteenth?
Yeah.
Motion by Paul Green, seconded by Jamie Lowery to hold a sidewalk on March eighteenth at six PM. Any discussion?
Yeah, I was gonna say, is it gonna be light out? Oh, come out this weekend, yeah, yeah.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Any opposed? It is unanimous.
How many trees are you gonna tap out there before you cut them down, the maple?
Did I say it again, Marty?
I said, how many maple trees do you have out that way? No, I'm just, I'm being smart, but I'm saying, before you cut them down.
Mostly all maple.
Yeah.
You know, maple and hemp lot, we tap it.
Now, this is, this is the other interesting. This is the other interesting point, because this is a subdivision, we have to do a public hearing.
I'll make a motion, we do the public hearing. March eighteenth.
Along with all the others.
Second that.
Motion by Paul Green, seconded by Tom McGinn, to hold a public hearing on March eighteenth, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. And if we, if we get through the public hearing and nobody comes up with pitchforks and any, anything else. We'll be all set, we, we should be able to.
Work on the final.
Do the final, yeah.
That's on us.
With my kids and I'll grow.
Thank you very much.
Is there anything else? I think we've got Paul and Rainey taking care of. The town planner, did we hear anything about the church? I don't think she heard nothing.
But I'm totally ignoring.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think those grandparents, they, you know, a special person they found at their home.
In school?
In school. He's just ending kindergarten.
Yeah.
Which one is this one now, this is?
All boys.
Right next to Ashley's.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't know, my son went to an all.
That's in credit units.
But I don't know, elementary school.
It's closed, yeah.
But you know, San Francisco. He couldn't get into the local publics in his area, you had to apply, it was a lottery. He would go to another public school someplace.
Kids from other neighborhoods.
Right, it's like a lottery, it's, it's, it's like a magnet.
Yeah.
I know we had a few, it's so screwed up.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, I did mention along the way, uh. I talk, call Keith, because, uh, the selectmen have not been publishing on the calendar. Uh, their agenda for uh their meetings. And I says, it's kind of hard to have people come and know what's going on in town if uh. You don't have an agenda posted.
That's true, but that does not affect us.
No, but I'm just saying. I'm just saying, you know, we, we are always posted, but I mean, the fact is, they wanna change. Her, there's amendments, I mean, now that's why I'm getting at.
Well, along the way. We will end up having public hearings on the various changes that the selectmen wanna do to the road ordinance. I think next week, but I'm not positive. Uh, not next week, two weeks. Nothing else for the board?
Motioner.
Second.
We're done, doesn't require a second.
I'm, so, happily David anyway.